On the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the South Pro Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the South Pro's website, For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner, or again, go back to www.southprotown.com slash remote meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on South Pro's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. We will now go to our agenda. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, Organization of the Board. Karina.
So, as you know, Mimi was re-elected to the Planning Board for a five-year term. So, once that happens, Planning Board typically, if I recall, checks on their organization if they want to change anything, or if they're going to hold all positions where they are. As far as Chair Vice Chair.
The, the first part of that would be a motion to congratulate Mrs. Latrell. Mr. Mills?
I make a motion, we congratulate Ms. Latrell on her overwhelming majority approval by the town to be for another five years on the planning board. Amazing accomplishment. Well done.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded in any discussion.
Mimi, glad you're part of the board. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I'm going to enjoy five more years. It was a grueling campaign, just by the way.
Well, you handled it so well. You like, you went high. You know, you, you just did, did an amazing job versus your opponents.
Such poison polish always. So glad to have you still on the team.
A lot of hard work and many long hours, Mimi. We, we know. We appreciate it. Motion's been made and seconded in any dis- any other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Don, yes?
I will abstain.
Lee, yes?
Very good. Uh, back to, uh, the organization of the board. Once again, if, uh, no one else wants to be the Chair, I will, uh, gladly, uh, take on that task for another year.
I, I would make a motion that Mr. Morris, uh, be Chairman of the Planning Board for another year.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in any discussion. Hearing none, Morris abstained.
Uh, Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Thank you. Uh, Karina, other positions?
I'm happy to relieve my Vice Chairship if someone else is passionate about it. I would let, you know, it's okay to rotate it around and give some of that responsibility to someone else if, if need be, but otherwise, I'm honored to fulfill those shoes again.
Make a motion to reappoint Andrew Mills as Vice Chair of the Planning Board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Uh, Mills abstaining for my marriage.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Uh, other appointments, uh, to, uh, other, uh, tasks or committees, uh, Karina?
Not at this time. We are working on a, we'll be working on a spreadsheet for the July, for the June meeting, or any, um, Master Plan Committee, um, updates to membership and, um, is, uh, is it the, um, I'm sorry, Open Space Preservation Commission? I'm not sure, but there's two. There's Master Plan Committee and another one. I'm sorry, it just fails my memory.
CPC?
The what?
Appointment to the CPC.
Oh yeah, there'll be various Planning Board Representatives appointed or recommended for appointment to, um, the Board of Selectment for those committees. Um, but, uh, there are two, uh, committees directly under the Planning Board, uh, for the full membership.
Public Works Planning Board?
Yes, there may be one of those coming up as well. We have a spreadsheet.
All of that will be on the agenda for our next meeting?
Yes, one of, one of the two June meetings, since the terms typically expire June 30th.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Master Plan Committee update. Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, our next meeting is June 10th, and just want to point out, it is a Thursday night instead of our usual Wednesday. We had to do some birthday avoidance, so we are on a Thursday night. Um, Judith, Sarah and I did, uh, meet on May 12th, just to make sure that Sarah had all the information she needed, um, as far as data that needed to be updated. And we also just touched base to make sure we all felt we were moving in the, the right direction. Judith was going to reach out to a couple of, uh, people just to check on the status of their, uh, chapters, but overall, we felt that we're in pretty good shape. I don't think we'll be finished by June 30th, uh, so we may have to reappoint some members. But I think, you know, hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll have a draft to present at the special town meeting this fall. Thank you.
That's great. That's great news, uh, Mimi. Excellent. Always forward progress on that. Any questions, comments?
No, just again, a thank you, Mimi, for all the hard work you've put into this. Appreciate it.
Very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Isabella Estates Bond Estimate slash Lot Release. I think I'm going to ask, uh, the Town Planner to, uh, cover this and, and if appropriate, uh, recognize the, um, very, uh, rapid and professional, um, response from Town Council. Karina?
Okay, um, we do have, um, Jack Bartolini in the attendees. We do. If we can elevate him so he can speak to this. Okay, well, um, joining us all, um, previously, we were asked by, um, Jack Bartolini of Bartolini Builders, um, to have four of the lots released at Isabella Estates off of Mount Vickery Road, um, and what we did not have in place was a covenant. No, what we, yes, what we did have, I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit mixed up. Okay, so we had, um, Fussin' O'Neil go out, what we needed was a bond. So we had a covenant in place, but we needed a bond, um, to assure that the costs of finishing the job, uh, were in place in case something happened, um, from a developer's point of, uh, perspective. So we had, um, Fussin' O'Neil go out and do an inspection on May 5th, uh, which they did, they, um, turned that around relatively quickly and, um, in the information we provided you, they provided a cost estimate, um, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, uh, to cover the cost of, still putting down the top course of the roadway, adjusting, um, the structures. Um, there is lumen seed, there's landscaping, there was, um, a head wall riprap, um, seeding, um, monumentation, as-built, et cetera. Uh, so there was a complete list. That information was provided to Jack Bartolini. Um, and they provided us with a draft bond, which then went to Town Council for review. That was turned around very rapidly, um, and, uh, Jack Bartolini and his son Michael made the required changes, of which included, uh, when you're talking, um, to add by and through its Planning Board as obligate to the legal language. Um, they needed to clarify their insurance company, um, to make sure that they were able to, um, that they were appropriate and could do business as they said, and, um, the bond also had previously said Bartolini Properties instead of Bartolini Builders. So because Bartolini Builders is the proponent, they had to iron that out on the bond. So, um, Jack Bartolini did that, and they provided us with a new original bond, um, acceptable to Town Council, and, um, that's where we are. Is, we have a draft release of lot from the Covenant for Isabella Estates for lots three, four, nine, and 10. And those are the lots that, um, on the map are about halfway up the roadway on either side.
No, wait a minute.
What?
Am I, am I, you're saying I'm just asking, I'm asking for all the lots to be released?
Oh, well, the original request said those four lots. I didn't know that.
Yeah, but that was only when I could get, I didn't know I was live here, but it's only when I can get a, uh, uh, I put, when I didn't have the bond. Now that I have the bond, I want them all released.
Oh, well, I didn't get a, uh, updated request letter, so I was still assuming you were asking for the four. I misunderstood.
No, I, I'm not going to place a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar surety on something and not get everything. I thought that was understood. When you turned me down, I thought that was understood, that I had to get the bond for the total amount of everything. So they're all, they're all supposed to be released.
Well, that can be an adjustment depending on the Planning Board's, um, response to your request. Um, it'd be good if tomorrow you can just send me, um, an updated request letter, because we usually file.
I will, I'll be happy to. I can, I can understand how that confusion. I didn't even think about it. I just assumed that we were releasing all the lots based on the fact that I got turned down for the no-bond four-lot release.
Yeah, well, we had to follow proper protocol, that's why.
No, that's fine. I, I, I understand that. That's fine.
Yeah, you weren't turned down. It's just that everything wasn't in place yet, so.
Now I have everything in place, I should be able to get everything.
We'll see. We'll have to see what the Planning Board says. I'm not, I.
All right, the only one on the screen is you, so okay. Looks like you and I just talked to each other.
Well, no, Jack, you should be seeing everybody. Everybody's.
All I'm seeing is you. I didn't think I was on.
I'm not really sure. It might be the way.
Oh, now I see Sarah.
It's probably how, how you have it set up. Sometimes it's set on speaker view only.
I don't, I don't know what I did. Maybe, that's all right. But anyway, I'm, I'm looking for all the lots to be released. There's no reason not to. They're all, they're all secured.
All right, so Don, that's the update to this point. Um, I can assure you that, um, a revised bond was received. We have the original document. And I can also attest to the fact that, um, Town Council opined on his final review of the final bond, that thank you for providing that information, nothing further needed.
Okay, um, uh, what's the difference between the four lots and all the lots? How many lot, more lots would it be?
There are eleven lots total, one of which you recall, Lot One, uh, will have to be an affordable duplex before, um, at the, up to, when he has seventy-five percent of them built, he's required to then build the, um, affordable duplex on Lot One. So there's eleven total lots.
Open it up to the board. Any questions, comments?
So are we voting? Do we need to vote to, um, amend the request, approve that amendment to the request, and, and then vote on that? Or like, how are we proceeding exactly, Mr. Chairman?
I think you have to, oh, okay, go ahead.
No, I, um, we've clearly showed the record that, uh, what Mr. Bartolini is saying is, um, understandable and, uh, consistent with, with where we are at this point. He has made, uh, I'm not sure if it was in the form of a request or a demand, but he has, um, indicated to the board that he wants all of the lots released. He's done that verbally, um, and has agreed to follow up in writing, uh, either later tonight or tomorrow. So I think, um, based on that, we would be able to, uh, entertain a motion to release all of the lots, not just the four.
Don, do you now have to accept the bond or the, the estimate, the bond review?
Yes, we, we would, I, I think we, in the past, what we've done, and it's appropriate, that we would, uh, have a motion to either, uh, approve the, the bond as written, or a motion to revise the bond up or down, as we would think appropriate, and if that passes, then we would move on to lot releases. So if we want to take a look at the, at the, uh, bond document, um, if we're comfortable with that, then we should entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Uh, I'll second it, but for discussion, I haven't, we didn't hear from Mimi or, uh, Marnie.
So proceeding.
I have no questions.
Okay.
And I was just looking at the actual bond, and it does say for the, the whole subdivision. It doesn't, it doesn't specify that it's just a certain number of properties, so I'm fine with it.
So any more discussion on the motion to, uh, approve the, the bond document?
I would just like to point out for the record that, um, there were some minor things in the inspection report, um, that would likely be covered under the contingency of the bond estimate. Uh, there was a contingency of twenty-nine thousand, so there were some minor things, you know, cleaning the detention basin out. There was some small tree growth that started there, um, some slope stabilization, um, little small, very small pieces sidewalk, uh, base to be repaired. And then if the stockpiles remained on site, there were some, um, stockpiles that they should have erosion control around them. And I believe those would be, um, those items were most likely covered under the contingency if there was an issue.
Anything else from you, Jack?
No, I mean, the, the stockpiles have growth on them, so they're, they're, they are stable. And, uh, uh, the, the, uh, minor sidewalk repair is covered under the, uh, um, the paving of the final coat of the sidewalk, so that, and then there are some minor little cleanup details, but that's, I don't know, there's some brick and debris around, but that's based for the raising of the catch basins and things like that. So it's, it's really kind of normal work as, as, uh, as a subdivision is being built.
Anyone else? So we have a motion to, uh, approve the bond document. Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
So the next item would be to, um, release all of lots or some other number?
I make a motion that we release all the lots for Hyabella Estates as requested by the applicant.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded in any discussion. Mrs. Houlihan?
I just, would we make a qualifier that pending the, um, you know, I know Mr. Bartolini just said he'd put in another request, but pending, uh, written request for, for a lot versus just the four that we currently have from March?
It's all amended.
When would, uh, the Town Planner get that, Jack?
I, I'll get it to you tomorrow. I apologize. I just assumed that since, uh, that we were talking about all the lots, uh, since the bond covered all the lots, uh, never, I never thought about it till tonight that, uh, that other request was there. So I can get you that, uh, tomorrow.
Okay. Motion's been made and amended. Any more discussion? All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Very good. Any other business on this, uh, agenda item?
Um, I just want to point out that, um, as a final step, that, um, once I update the, um, notice of, uh, release of the lots, I'll have to have the Planning Board members sign that document, and then it has to be notarized, so we'll do it like we did, um, just pre- recently. And then, uh, once that's done, we'll file it with Town Clerk, and then Jack can pick up and attested copy from the Town Clerk for recording.
Very good.
Jack, if you have any questions, you can call me at the office and we'll answer.
No, that sounds fine. I just, um, just curiosity, are you guys going to be open for business live pretty soon? Since everything gets lifted, uh, what is it, this weekend, I think?
The townhouse is now, I, I believe the townhouse is now open. There's a sign on the door they just put up today.
Oh, okay.
So that's, I, I, that's my understanding.
I think it's, I think it's June 1st, but there's, there's a sign up. I think there's a sign up that says, we're open, June 1st.
Thanks, yeah.
Finally.
The door is still locked. You have to have an appointment to come in, but June 1st, the do, the door is going to be unlocked, I believe, yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you. And one last, uh, compliment to Town Council. Despite being jammed with, um, the town meeting and other, um, workload, he still was able to get through this paperwork and get it in writing back to the Town Planner. Excellent job. We really, uh, appreciate him supporting the, the workload that we sent his way. Next item on the agenda is, um, a discussion item. Sixteen Clifford Road Accessory Apartment. Karina?
All right, Sarah, we have Jason Kurtz, um, in the attendee list. He's the, um, property owner's architect.
Yes, he's.
Can we get the, um, the, uh, drawings on the screen?
Yep. So Jason Kurtz is, uh, architect with Kurtz Design Studio LLC, um, 168 Middle Road, South Grove, Mass, and he provided, um, an application for an accessory apartment. And just to recap, um, when a property owner applies to the zoning board for an accessory apartment, which is a public hearing through the Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, uh, the, the, the proponent, um, is to come to the Planning Board to get a report from the Planning Board, uh, to the ZBA on recommending, uh, the, that the accessory apartment be allowed with conditions, or not, or just as it is. So Mr. Kurtz is here today to explain, um, at sixteen Clifford Street, uh, what they're proposing to do at that existing home.
Hello, thank you, uh, for having us. So the, my client, uh, purchased this home in 2020, and the existing home, uh, in its, uh, previous life, at one point had like an in-home daycare. Uh, so like the basement area is broken into a bunch of rooms, because I think they used them as different kinds of rooms for that use. Uh, it also has, uh, utility space, um, and there's, you know, a large, uh, rec room space as well. Uh, on the first floor level, because this is a ranch, uh, with a, almost like a walkout basement. You know, a lot of it is, you know, close to being at grade. On the first floor level, if you go up one. Um, so at the first floor level, there's currently, uh, actually, can you go to the, uh, the demo? Thank, thank you. Uh, so currently on this level, there's a master bedroom, there's, uh, a kid's bedroom where their daughter, uh, sleeps. Then down below, what is listed as Bedroom Number Three, that is where, uh, her mother currently is, um, residing, and what is listed as Bedroom Number Four right now, uh, on the previous submissions, uh, it's being used as an office, the full intended use of it is as an office. You know, if it would satisfy everybody by just removing the closet so that it can remain as like an office or a den, uh, that would be the ideal situation. The system for this septic is sized for a four-bedroom. Uh, currently, there are four bedrooms in the, the previous owner. The area that is, we're doing the construction is listed as previous studio. It was being used basically as like a studio apartment for somebody that was living there, minus like a full kitchen. And so what we're trying to do is transform that previous studio into, uh, the first floor level of the accessory apartment. If you go to the, the proposed first floor for me. We're transforming that, you know, proposed, or that, uh, existing like previous studio into the living room. We want to put in a full kitchen for her mother, uh, has, you know, an entrance area, a little area for her desk. And then the existing staircase just to the, uh, area above it, yep, right there. That takes you down into the basement. Currently, we are going to, uh, coordinate that piece off to be an internal staircase for the accessory apartment, um, which takes you to the basement for her bedroom. Uh, the only way that this can work is if, uh, they do one of three things. They, they basically convert, um, the, you know, the, the one technical like bedroom that was Bedroom Number Four on the first drawing, if that is, you know, seen as an office or a den, uh, by removing the closet, I guess, is the typical way to do it. The, upgrade the system to five bedrooms, because if we didn't do that, and it, the building department only sees it as a bedroom, then they would end up having a five-bedroom, and it's a four-bedroom septic. Um, the, the most extreme measure that my client would prefer not to do is remove the wall in between the two rooms, uh, as they are intending to potentially have, uh, one more child, and that would become the child's, the next child's, uh, bedroom. So they, but they still need to maintain some kind of office space, because she works a lot from home. So, uh, the, the primary interest is in maintaining it as a four-bedroom, removing, you know, closets and whatever they have to do, so that that room is considered an office and not a bedroom. That way, everything falls under conforming for the septic system. We're just trying to reuse a lot of the interior space so that her mother can, you know, basically live with them, uh, much more comfortably. Uh, the septic system, as I said, is sized for a four-bedroom. Uh, the parking spaces that are, um, on-site, you know, there's two garage parking spaces, plus the driveway, uh, is easily able to accommodate, uh, upwards of six vehicles. It's a, it's a fairly large driveway, if any of you have, uh, been over by there. At this time, I'm not sure if there's any questions that you guys have, or if there's any, any, uh, concerns or anything like that. Um, the main, the main goal is to reuse existing space, make it look from the outside like it blends with the, the neighborhood. You would never know that there's an accessory apartment here. And, uh, just ma- make sure that the, the curb appeal, you know, works for the neighborhood.
Jason, could you just do one thing and explain, um, what that room is, um, to the right of the deck with the bathroom and the closet?
Yeah, so like, they, they don't actually use it for any, it's like a pass-through room, because, um, it, I, like I said, this was totally different than a residential use in, in its past life. Uh, I guess you could put a pool table maybe there, but, uh, they don't actually use that space for anything. They, they store some like, you know, boxes and stuff there occasionally. Uh, the dining area is in the front of the house, and then they have like a small eating kitchen table to the right of the island.
Karina, this afternoon, you and I went over this a little bit. And is there an update to, uh, your, your earlier concerns, or do you still have questions?
I still do have a concern, and, um, I was discussing this with Jason Kurtz earlier today as well. It's very important that, you know, the septic system can handle the number of bedrooms. So when you design a septic system, um, it's based on the number of bedrooms in a house, and. And a bedroom is qualified under building code in certain ways. And it's, you know, has a closet window, um, and other features that Jason can probably tell you more about. So it would appear that, Jason, that you really have one, two, three, four, five bedrooms. One, two, yep. And then you have a studio area that you're gonna convert to, um, a kitchen and accessory kitchen, you know, apartment unit there and a living area. And then downstairs in the basement, you're gonna add another bedroom. So, um, originally, your, your existing floor plan showed, um, an office where bedroom three is. And to the right of bedroom three was a bedroom and you had a wall there. So I, I think it's critical to confirm with the Board of Health. Um, I, I don't, I think you're understanding, and I could be wrong, that you were just swapping out a bedroom. And they thought you had four bedrooms and that's what was being swapped out. So it could become a problem for the homeowner, um, if now you're showing, you know, you're gonna have one, two, three, four, technically five bedrooms, plus you're adding one. For a septic system that hasn't asked for four.
Where, where's the fifth bedroom, um, that you were mentioning? Cause you have the master and then.
That's one right there.
That's one.
If you go south, you have two. Now go left.
Yep.
That area that's non-defined, I think that might be considered a bedroom because you have a bathroom and a closet.
And you, you, that's, that actually, that, it, there's no way to get to the other rooms without walking through there, cause that's a step up. That, that's like a walkway and then it steps up.
Okay, so that would be like a building, a code enforcement or the building commissioner could have pined if that's a, a bedroom or not. Cause she knows building code much way better than I do. Um, but you still have now, um, four.
Right.
Potential bedrooms plus the one you're adding in the basement. And I know you mentioned that, um, the owner really will do anything they need to, to not have to address the septic issue at all. Cause I know that's expensive and removing that wall, uh, between the office and bedroom three and making that into one bedroom. Um, I, I'm not, you know, that could be an option, but, um, you know, the plans have to be provided in a definitive sense, you know what I mean? So.
Well, the, the, the owner had said to me that they, uh, you know, let's go off, I guess, the notion that the, the one room that you mentioned. Being like bedroom number three or whatever off the deck.
Yeah.
Yet if, if that is, you know, if that's not really considered a bedroom, cause I don't see how it can be. But let's say it's, let's say theoretically, it's not for this argument. It's, they currently have four bedrooms, plus they had that like studio space. And if we were to, worst case scenario, you know, it have to upgrade the system to a five-bedroom septic to accommodate the four existing bedrooms and then the one in the basement. My client has said that they would be more apt to do something along those lines than try to kind of configure this so that, uh, they have to start taking walls down inside of the first floor. Where I kinda show where there was a bedroom and an office. I guess some of the question is, if we only make minor modifications to the office, is that considered? You know, would that be considered an office or like a den type of setup versus a bedroom?
Yes, those are probably the things that you'd have to square away with, with the building department. And then, you know, have a plan. That's how I would think about it. I, you know, I, I, I don't speak for the planning board or the zoning board, but, you know, that's how I would think of it. You'd have to actually present what you wanna do. I, I know you're kind of figuring it out right now.
Well, we're, we're, we're just kinda caught a little bit because we're not gonna go, like, we're not gonna go through the expense of creating a, you know, an, a septic upgrade if it can be something as simple as modifying the, the closet, for instance, and now it's a four-bedroom again. And at the same time, the reason that the building department, you know, gave us the rejection letter is because we're trying to put in a, you know, an accessory apartment. So like, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a, you know, what comes first, you know?
But you do have to get a report from the Board of Health and I'm not sure they understood what you were presenting them. I, I didn't see a.
Well, the board, for the board of, for the Board of Health, it would end up being, you know, if the billing department says that that office is an office and not a bedroom, then it would be a four-bedroom and we weren't doing anything in violation to the, the four-bedroom septic system.
Yeah, if you meet the, if you meet the codes and what's required, then that would make sense. I'm just not sure, you know, how it's presented, but again, it's up to the planning board to, for their part.
Okay, I think we have enough information to have, uh, let's open this up to the planning board members. Mr. Mills, questions, comments?
Jason, I, I completely, uh, understand what your client is trying to do. I sympathize with, uh, you know, trying to, trying to make it accommodating for, uh, an, uh, a parent. My, my kids actually went to the, uh, structure when it was a school. Um, I'm familiar with the unique layout, I'll say, uh, from pickup, drop-off. Seeing the kids at school there. I, I would be in favor of definitely going the route of removing that closet for that one, uh, bedroom and try to convert, you know, the, making it the four-bedroom house. That way. So I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's being proposed. Because in the end, if your septic end up, ends up getting overflow, flowing or problems, it's gonna be the onus on the homeowner to begin with, uh, and it's gonna have to get checked before they sell it. Uh, so I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Uh, question on the proposed bedroom number four, is that subterranean?
Oh, can you go to the, um, the proposed, uh, basement, please? It's down on the bottom.
There you go.
Uh, it's not technically, it's, uh, it's, it'll sit a couple of feet below grade. There's actually a door that walks out to an area that currently has a, like a three-foot wide by three-foot deep, patio and then like, or exit and then a couple steps up. The, my client wants to enlarge that lower portion by the door so that they can have a, a little patio area. Plus, they're gonna take the foundation wall and cut, uh, do a little bit of cutting to put in some, you know, much larger windows. So it's gonna meet all, it'll be more than sufficient in meeting any code, but it, it, it's actually gonna have its own like egress out of the basement.
Uh, I mean, I'm generally in favor of, um, making the process to get accessory apartments easier in Southborough. Um, as long as we're in compliance from, um, Board of Health standpoint and from the safety standpoint in terms of, uh, egress.
Yeah. Yeah, now this, so this is actually the, out of all the different renditions we did, this is easily the most desirable for both lighting, natural ventilation and egress, uh, capabilities. If there will happen to be a fire, she can literally walk out her bedroom door and could be outside in, you know, ten seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Luttrell.
Uh, thank you, uh, Jason. So if it was a, a school before, I'm assuming there's plenty of parking and room for an extra car and.
Yeah.
Those are no concerns.
Yeah, the, the parking is, uh, easily accommodated.
Um, and so you have not received a report from the Board of Health?
Uh, we, we got a bunch of different emails from them, uh, stating approval and all these different things. But we never actually got a formal letter.
Okay.
And I, and I, uh, copy and pasted and sent to, um, Karina, the, some of the emails that we received.
Right, um, I'm, I'm generally, um, in support of accessory apartments and this seems like a good plan, um. As long as the, as long as things are worked out with the Board of Health and the building department with the septic and number of bedrooms. But that's, that's not really our purview. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hohlhand.
Uh, I don't have any questions and I follow in the steps of my fellow planning board members. Um, looks like ingress, egress is, uh, a fine, parking is fine. And, um, again, as long as, uh, Board of Health and septic and all that is clear. To Mimi's point, we don't have that purview, but I think as long as it's a safe place, I fully support it.
Okay, thank you. Um, from my point of view, I, I agree with my board members that, uh, this is, has the, uh, great potential for an accessory apartment. Not only the structure and the yard and the paving and the parking, but the neighborhood. However, the, um, the report that we're, uh, required to submit, it seems like there's a couple of loose ends here and I'm not quite sure what I'm voting for. You know, are you going to, uh, comply by modifying the septic system? Are you going to comply by modifying, uh, the plan and taking down a wall? Or is your compliance, uh, something else that we haven't discussed yet or a combination of things? So my recommendation would be that you take the positive reaction from the planning board tonight and go and go, uh, through this in detail with your client, the Board of Health. And then submit a final plan that we can vote on, that we know what we're, we know what it's going to be. We know where the bedrooms are gonna be, we know where the doors are gonna be, and where the stairs are, so on. And who's, what rooms are what. And so that, that would be my suggestion. I think it would be difficult for us to, uh, submit a report to the ZBA with, uh, these open items in discussion as well as on the plan.
Jason, did we lose you?
No, uh, I'm here, I'm just processing. Cause the, I mean, basically they, they only have two different directions they were gonna go. Either remove the closet and allow it to be called an office. And if they don't do that, they're going to in, upgrade the system to allow for a five-bedroom. Cause they don't, they can't, they don't really want to remove the number of, uh, rooms in order to allow for potential, you know, child down the road, so.
Well, they should, to me, as far as I'm concerned, they should decide which way you're gonna go and have the plan reflect that. Then we'll have something to vote on.
Yeah.
Our next, when's our next meeting?
Our next meeting is, um, June seventh.
How many days, how many days do we have to respond, uh, to submit the report?
Um, thirty-five days. So let me see where we are here. So the, um, the, um, I don't know what time, when it starts from though, it may be from, um, when we received our application or when the zoning board of appeals received the application, I can tell you. Here. Give me one second. Says here that, um, special permits for accessory apartments may be issued upon referral of the application and receipt in consideration of a report or after thirty-five days elapsed without such report. From the Board of Health certifying adequate provisions have been made in accordance with the requirements of the Board of Health for drainage and for disposal of sewage and waste generated by the occupancy of the apartment and from the planning board describing the lot on which the dwelling is located, the neighborhood where it's located and the effect of the proposed apartment thereon, the adequacy of ingress and egress provisions. But, and grantings and, yeah, so, um, issued upon referral of and the receipt can, or, or honor after thirty-five days have elapsed. So the, um, special permit was, um, received was submitted to the zoning board of appeals at, let me just look real quick here. Um, the application was signed on April eighth. And I believe it was filed with the town clerk on April twenty-first, if I'm not mistaken. So on the, on the zoning board of appeals agenda, under the item for this public hearing for them, it said, um, application filed April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
So you're saying that almost all of the thirty-five days are gone?
To May twenty-first, yes. Yes.
And how long of, has the planning department had this?
Since, um, we received a phone call on the thirteenth of May and we responded to Jason on, um, the following Monday, Monday, Tuesday, which was the seventeenth or eighteenth. So we got it on a Thursday and then we responded and so, um, he supplied us this information so we could get him onto this meeting.
So about twenty of the thirty-five days were gone before we received it.
Correct. Um, I spoke with the building commissioner earlier today and, um, she did say that she had mentioned that they would have to come to planning when they were going through their process there. So, um, I'm not sure why we weren't approached sooner, uh, could just be miscommunication, misunderstanding. Um, but as soon as we got it, we, we tried to jump on it right away and wanted to get it on the next meeting. I believe, Jason, you were working on another one on Fisher Road as well at the time and, um, if that one was gonna proceed, I, I, I think you were informed that you had to come to planning board for any accessory apartments, so.
Uh, that was just a, that was more a informational inquiry from a, a client. That wasn't, that wasn't anything formal.
Right, so, um, yeah, it also indicates it in the code that they have to come here, uh, but, you know, everyone has different, um, ways of how they look at the code and do what they have to do. Trying to be diplomatic.
So why don't I open it back up to the board? I'm the only one that, uh, got into this level of detail about not knowing what we're, we're voting on. But, um, so I'm just one of five. If, if, I'll, I think we should open this up to, uh, different ways to, uh, resolve this. Mr. Mills, any suggestions? Anyone wanna go first?
Uh, like I said, I'd be in favor of removing the closet from the, the bedroom that they're, wanna, uh, eliminate. Um, not have to, they don't have to take out the whole wall, try to be accommodating to the, uh, the homeowner to, uh, bring in, uh, parents slash in-law, uh, for the future. But that, that would be my approach.
Um, John, maybe I could help by just saying that, um, to be a little clearer, when we drafted the report for this property, um, we basically say that, um, the planning board met, we described the property. Um, it's located on Clifford Street in a residential A district. The accessory apart- apartment will be located partially on the first floor and in the basement of the existing dwelling. The proposed one thousand one hundred and five square feet of accessory apartment located between the first and basement uh, level is approximately seventeen and a half percent of the habitable floor area of six thousand three hundred and seventeen square feet for the dwelling. It's required to, you know, uh, the twenty, it meets the twenty-five percent threshold. It's required to, you know, the twenty, it meets the twenty-five percent threshold. Then there's the discussion of adequacy of ingress and egress and provisions for off-street parking. Ingress and egress is via the existing driveway. For the building itself, there are three points of ingress and egress, one through the garage, one on the exterior of the dwelling and one into the primary dwelling. Off-street parking is provided in the form of an existing driveway that holds up to six cars. The plans also include a two-car garage. And then typically, the reports will have a, the board voted so-and-so to recommend or not grant the special contingent upon favorable determination from the Zoning Board of Appeals, also adding meeting the conditions for twenty-five percent threshold that you're not exceeding that, but you can also add condition there if you're concerned about, you know, and we're also concerned with the number of bedrooms in the Septic system. Like you can say, the Planning Board can outline in a paragraph their concerns or bullet item them and recommend that to the Zoning Board of Appeals in the report of what your findings were at this stage.
Okay. What, I just want to hear, hear from the rest of the board.
Okay.
Were you, were you all set, Andrew? Jesse?
I think I'm fine with what Karina has drafted with the language added that we specifically discussed the egress for the proposed fourth bedroom. And that the board, you know, made it clear that the plan needs to be modified to address the number of bedrooms so we're in compliance with the Board of Health. I don't think that we need to hold up the vote until that actually gets done personally because we're only sending this letter to the ZBAA, we're not actually approving a final plan, in my opinion. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Latrell?
I'm in agreement with what the town planner said, that, that we're in favor of granting the special permit contingent upon report from the Board of Health certifying adequate provisions for disposal of sewage is what pulled right out of the, out of the special permit.
Okay. Mrs. Hulahan?
I too am in support of a contingency statement, so I follow my member, fellow Planning Board members.
That sounds like the way we'll go then. So is the draft report sufficient to be voted on?
It could be with just clarification of the detailed paragraph based on what the members, Planning Board members just described. Specifically referencing the egress to the fourth bedroom in the basement. The plans need to be modified, should be modified to show and clarify the number of bedrooms to comply with Board of Health Septic System requirements repeated by Mimi and Marnie, so those, you know, clarification of the plans and that it should meet Board of Health requirements versus the number of bedrooms.
So does the board feel confident based on what the town planner just said to allow the town planner to take the draft and finalize it and have myself sign the report? I see four thumbs up, so that's the way we'll proceed then, Mr. Kurtz. Town Planner will finish up the report. Will entertain a motion to submit the report to the ZBAA in accordance with what was discussed here tonight and the way forward as far as finalizing the draft. So move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded relative to the report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
Very good, anything else, Mr. Kurtz?
Oh, that's it, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Ninety-Six Mount Vickery Road, Ruby Estates subdivision, the covenant.
Yes, this one also came about very quickly and everything addressed, so Michael Bartolini with Bartolini Properties. As you recall, Planning Board recently approved the definitive subdivision plans for Ruby Estates of Ninety-Six Mount Vickery Road as part of the process. Planning Board endorsed the final plans that were approved and as well as referencing the decision and Michael Bartolini provided a draft covenant, which we then quickly submitted to Town Council for review. It was one revision requested by Town Council and that was in section five, line four, after the words "Planning Board" to add the phrase "for good cause shown", and that's in reference to the length of the covenant. The paragraph is that said construction and installation, if any, shall be completed within two years of the date of execution of this covenant and upon failure to so complete and to so, I'm sorry, or to so complete said construction and installation unless the time of the performance thereof is extended by vote of the Planning Board for good cause shown, which shall be recorded, et cetera. So Michael Bartolini then made those revisions and provided us an updated covenant, which we returned to Town Council upon which he said he was all set. And so the Planning Board needs to accept the covenant. And if it is and it gets recorded, then we can release the endorsed plans once the appeal period is open, elapsed and Town Clerk has to sign off to attest on the plans as well that there's been no appeal since it's a subdivision. Sorry, that was a long sentence.
All right, open it up to, Michael, did you have anything to add to that? Good evening.
How you doing? I just have one quick question, so if you do sign, release the covenant, I record that at the same time as the plans, correct? So like, I don't record the covenant first and then the plans? It's all at the same time, correct?
I believe. Let me tell you quickly, it's right here.
I would think I would have to record, I would need to record the plan to record the covenant.
Yeah.
Recording nothing, right?
Before, yeah, it says before the board endorses its approval and signs the definitive plan and releases it to the applicant for recording. The applicant, or owner, that is, the owners of the land shall on a definitive plan and must deliver the board adequate security for the required construction of ways and installation of utilities and other requirements to serve the lots, one more. In the form, and you've chosen a covenant, so within ten days of release for recording of the, of approved definitive plan and covenant, if any, at the registry, the applicant shall notify the board in writing presenting evidence of the recording of the plan and the covenant. So, yes. You'll get both together, so if the Planning Board accepts the covenant and you fill in the blanks and we get the signed plans, which are already all signed by the Planning Board, down to the town clerk to review and attest that no appeal took place, then you can pick up the all the information and get it recorded.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, so I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, until this one's finalized, I'm going to still recuse myself as I did with the rest of the plan.
Thank you. Mrs. Stein?
So Karina, if you could just refresh my memory, when do we get into the discussion of the bonding?
The bonding happens when, so Bartolini builder, Bartolini Properties will go out and they'll start building the roadway, the infrastructure in the roadway. And when they get to a certain point, for example, like where Isabella is now where the base is down and, you know, the water is in and the electric line is in cable tunnel and they want to start selling the lots, they'll need them released. Before they can do that, they'll have to put a bond in place to cover the cost of any remaining work, should the developer fail or leave or bankrupt or whatever, that the town can then assure that the people who have bought the lots from being released still have access and that the project will finish, so they're not left with an unfinished road, et cetera.
Thank you. All set, Mrs. Stein? Okay, Mrs. Latrell, any questions, comments?
I'm all set, no questions, thank you.
Mrs. Hulahan?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Stein?
I would like to make a motion that the Planning Board accept the covenant as submitted for Ninety-Six Mount Vickery Road, Ruby Estates.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
All set, Michael?
Thank you. Just thank you for the quick turnaround on this one too, thanks Aldo, Karina and Sarah, so.
No problem. We'll get you all the, we'll get it down to the town clerk and let you know when it's, the plans are ready to get, pick up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you and best of luck.
Thanks, bye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board. First item is the Planner's Report. And, which is the warrant articles, project update, and then the performance review.
So the first thing I want to ask is on June 7th, Planning Board meeting, the Lisa Bracchio, who's current Chair of the Board of Selectmen, asked if we could have a joint, if they could post a joint meeting for that Planning Board meeting to discuss the downtown district. It was a list of ten concerns that the Planning Board had back in April that we compiled into an email and sent to them. They've had Adam Costa reply with some responses and they want to go over those with the Planning Board in order to start working towards all-town meeting and get some of that addressed. So they asked if the Planning Board would consider starting at 6:00 PM on June 7th instead of 7:00 because Adam Costa is available from 6:00 to 7:00, he has his town meeting that evening. But he could accommodate that. And the agenda right now only has our standard items master plan and then that discussion item, so it would be a good time to accommodate that if it's possible. So I'm asking if the Planning Board would be available to start at 6:00 PM on June 7th.
Looks like everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, I can do it.
Super.
Okay.
I'll let Lisa Bracchio know and then she will update the Board of Selectmen and the EDC to join that meeting. Some feedback on some of the properties that were concerned, some of the granite companies that had their granite out in the driveway. It's my understanding after speaking with the Building Commissioner that both of those locations had remedied and removed the granite from the driveway areas close to Route 9. I'll confirm that again to make sure they're not there when I do some site visits over the next couple of weeks. But I know that was a lingering question.
Karina, when, when did you get confirmation from the Building Inspector that it's been remedied?
We spoke this afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we went over several things and she mentioned that she believed that they had moved them, so.
And it, so just for my own clarity?
Yeah.
I understood that the granite shouldn't be out in front of the property for storage and display as a sign, not just if it's on the driveway.
Well, that's where they had it. They had it, they had it in the driveway with a sign duct taped or somehow glued to the granite slab on a a bracket that holds it in place.
Okay.
At least at one of the places, so we'll check the other one too, if there's some misunderstanding, we'll clarify that.
Thank you.
See what we can do. Okay. And where planning's required to have performance evaluations done and submitted by May 31st, so I'm working on those for Sarah and Dawn and I are working on one for me. And just letting you know that those will be going in and previously Dawn had reviewed those and signed off on them, so I just wanted to let you know that and if that procedure would still be the same. They're due on May 31st.
You're right, the, all, all board members are entitled to review the the written performance evaluation. And as soon as it's available, if you'd like, we would get that to all the members or just allow the chairman to complete the process. Yeah, Marnie?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind weighing in because I, I just think it was over-the-top support from Sarah and Karina on the lighting by law and I really want to make sure that's acknowledged and put in writing.
You must know that the, there's a page limit.
You're kidding, right?
Yeah.
There is a page limit, right, Karina?
Yeah, we, we try to be pretty efficient because they have, because we, the personnel board and the town decided to shift all reviews to the end of the fiscal year to start for July 1st, all reviews come in now at the same time and they try to do them under consent agenda and so they're reviewing like this huge pile. So there's a specific form that we fill out and we fill in the details. So we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that once that draft is, is to that point that we'll send, we'll email it to the Planning Board members. And if there's anything you'd like to add or retract, we'll take those comments too. And we'll update those.
Can we make it single-spaced and font eight?
We do that already.
All right, yeah, I'd be happy to weigh in.
All right.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that they, that there are enough accolades for how fabulous Sarah and Karina are.
That's all, you're too kind, but thank you.
So why don't we just, go ahead, go ahead, Andrew.
Dawn, I just want to, this is a little bit different, but you know, in, while Sarah and Karina are getting reviewed, I would like to just say I'm open to feedback about myself as a Planning Board member, if I, if there's anything from your guys' perspective that is holding you guys up from doing your job, I'd like to get that feedback. I know it might not always be the most easy thing to give, not, and I don't know if I am holding anything up and I know you'd probably tell me anyhow, but I just want to verbalize that. So either please, you know, let me know, I know Karina, you ping me a lot along the way, but I don't want you to feel that this is just a one-way street. If there's things that I'm doing and I'm sure the other boards members feel the same way, they would want to know. You can either reach out to me directly or go through Dawn, whatever works best, but it's definitely a two-way street and Kate, same goes for you. If there's anything, Kate, from your standpoint that we should be doing better to make your job easier, please let us know is what I mean.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thanks, Andrew, I can speak for myself and I know Sarah and I talk a lot, but all Planning Board members are extremely accessible for us, so when we do have an issue, we call and all of you, Jessie, Andrew, Mimi, Marnie and Dawn, when we call, you always answer our phone calls and if you're busy or something, you return them very quickly. And just note that if we didn't get that, we'd email you too. Um, and just note that if we didn't get that, we'd email you, too, so, but we have no complaints, you're all supporting us and um. Everyone has a contribution that they make to whatever we're doing and. Each one, each person is so valuable on this board from all their different perspectives that we appreciate all of your help. Yes. Everybody has their specialties and everybody has their time when they're really needed and that's when they jump in and. All five members have been very accommodating to us, so we we really love this planning board.
Well.
Just thank you.
Actually, uh, that last discussion was not on the agenda. Uh, the performance evaluations was on the agenda, however. Uh, due to the nature of the comments, which were all positive toward the five of us, I was deliberately slow in um. Cutting off the discussion because it's not on the agenda.
Uh, technically, I think a performance review of ourselves would fall under that, so that's all I'm asking if and and if there's a way to. Make sure that they can be as efficient as possible, that. I I think we were well within our means for the agenda item, and I'm sure if we weren't, Mr. Stivers would correct me immediately.
He is watching. We currently have five attendees.
Are there any more uh?
Oh, yes, now quickly, um. Uh, just be aware, um, previously we sent you um information on the housing choice. Uh, informations, the changes of the threshold uh for voting. Um, when it is in regard to certain aspects of affordable housing, um, there's a new updated May twentieth version. Um, that we've provided to all of you, you might want to look at it prior to the downtown district discussion on the seventh. Um, South Rose Open Space Preservation Commission announces the launch of the National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat Program. Um, if you didn't get an E alert um through the town's website system, let me know, um, I may have forwarded the link to you for that information. Um, there is a working with forty B workshop on June fourteenth. If any of the planning board members are interested, um, let me or Sarah know and we'll get you signed up. Um, the accelerate bridges are moving forward, they're going to do a trial run. Um, above on the turnpike of how they're going to close lanes, um, shouldn't be affecting underneath the local roads. And, yeah.
Karina, back to the workshop on, I think it's, you said June fourteenth?
Yeah.
The um, the flyer uh announcing that has the correct date. But on the screen, there was uh an additional. Um, like notice of it and it said June fourteenth, twenty twenty.
My typing was the actual the advertisement.
Just look at the email that you sent us because when I first read it, I thought maybe I missed it last year, but. Um, it 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 has the wrong year on on that, you'll see it.
Okay, all right, the one I had does say it's this year, so I'll double check it, you don't sign up for something that's not there.
That's the the flo, when I looked at it on the screen. There were two like notes, notices or whatever, the one on the left, which was, I think, prepared by Judy. Um, was correct and the right's right-hand side of the screen had another. Different type of a note referring to the same thing, but it had the wrong, the wrong year.
Okay, I'll check. Wrong year, okay, and then um, lastly, Chestnut Hill. Farm barn is having a barn raising on um Thursday, May twenty-seventh from one to two. Where they're gonna, where they're going to show, um, they're going to start putting some of the timber framing up.
Can you spell, can you spell raising?
R A I S I N G, building of, they're putting it back up together, they're putting it back together.
No Z in that word.
No, they're not taking it down, it's the old barn being built back up.
Yep.
The trustees let us know that, so that's what I have for planner's report, sorry so fast, I just want you to get it all.
Well, also on there was the warrant articles and uh again, at this point in the uh, in the meeting, again, uh. If if you saw the town meeting, um, the uh lighting uh. Bylaw pa, both passed, uh, but the lighting bylaw had um quite a bit of discussion. Uh, technical and non-technical, a lot of it had to do with uh the cost of implementing it. And and continuing it, some of it had to do with enforcement. But um, thanks to um Mrs. Houlihan and Dr. Heilman. Uh, they were able to prevail through um their presentation. And it uh, the uh, the bylaw passed uh by quite a bit, quite a few votes, so it was really an excellent job. And then um, Mrs. Latrell on the site plan uh article. Um, I was in the back and I could, I could see that people were really uh following what you were saying. Because it, you know, referring to specific test text uh that was being changed. And um, I I thought it was very well presented and again, that that passed uh very comfortably. So, I mean, that's just really an excellent job by the planning board members and the and the uh planning department. To um get through these uh code uh articles, code, you know, the zoning articles are um. Always very challenging to get get passed and it was a great success, a ton of work to put into it. And um, great job, Mr. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, one, one thing, Mr. Chairman, Mimi, not to take away from your presentation, but for Marnie to uh. Go head-to-head with Mr. Cleary and uh win and get him to vote actually in favor what she was proposing. Uh, was a a true testament to her preparedness and stellar argument. Um, I I rarely see uh Mr. Cleary lose at the microphone at town meeting, so. Uh, great job, excellent.
Go ahead, Marnie.
Yeah, so interestingly, this is a little bit, I mean, we're talking about the warrant articles, I did receive um, and I know Tim is still on the call. But I received um an advocate uh outreach around American Disabilities Act. And I learned if from this, after this meeting. That people with light sensitivity disabilities are being hurt severely by these lights and they may suffer seizures, seizures, emotional terror or disabling migraines. And there's an advocacy group that is looking to help um particularly and the new I D A guidelines actually lowered. The illumination to even far below three thousand Kelvin. So it's just, it's, there's more and more data coming out and I I'm, I will forward this on to the light lighting working group. Because I think there's, you know, ever in, ever more information that we can learn and help our community and um. You know, I just was really glad that this person reached out.
And Dr. Heilman, um, uh, based on my discussion with him at the end and his wife. Um, is expected to continue uh to uh provide input. Uh, free of charge, of course, uh, to you, Marnie, he was a huge, really uh. Huge help tech on the technical side and for you to learn all that stuff, amazing, great job.
It's there, I couldn't have done it without Sarah, so, and Karina.
It was a, it was a pleasure to work with everybody and I'm just really glad that the community, you know, did finally receive and. Um, you know, supported, so it's great, it's great news. Great job, Sarah, as usual.
Anything else on the warrant articles? And uh, you sent us the spreadsheet that uh the town administrator prepared. Summarizing the actions on all the warrant articles, that was, that was a pretty good product. I love, I think that was pretty good, uh, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item.
Motion we approved the minutes from May tenth, two thousand twenty-one as written.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the, our next meeting is June seventh. Uh, and that's the one that's going to be at six P M?
Correct.
Okay, um, and Kate, if you subtract out the six minutes that we lost. From a certain board member being late, uh, we are at an hour and uh, what? Hour and twenty minutes.
Hour and twenty minutes.
Pretty good.
Motion's been made to adjourn and seconded, any discussion?
Now, I just want to point out that I think I make up my time with making motions so quickly.
Good fact.
Yeah, I I would agree with that.
Hence your reappointment as vice chair.
Sure, that's gets reflected in the minutes, Kate.
Uh, duly noted. That's Mr. Six Sigma.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.